Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Before we begin our regularly scheduled city council meeting, we do have three advertised ordinances that we're gonna have a public hearing on. That'd be ordinance 1102, 1103, and 1104. So normally what we'll do is we'll do each ordinance at a time. We'll read the header into the record. I'll ask the audience if anybody wishes to comment. And then I'll ask if council wants to comment. And then if not, we'll close the public hearing on it. So what we'll do is we'll start off with ordinance 1102 concerning amending City Code 70, which is entitled Fees. And Madam Secretary, could you please read that header into the record?
Yes. An ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havity Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11 E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland and Sections 33 and 34 of the Havity Grace City Charter, to amend City Code 70, Fees, by repealing and replacing ordinance number 1091 to update the definitions and general schedule of fees charged by the city for various permits, licenses, and other services thereunder.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. Is there anybody in the audience this evening who has come here to speak on ordinance 1102? Okay, any comments from the council? Sir?
Just for the council's awareness, I do plan to submit an amendment to ordinance 1102. I should have that in the refile prior to our next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? All right, without any further comments, I now close public hearing on ordinance 1102. Time is 7:03. We'll move on to the next ordinance for a public hearing, which would be ordinance number 1103, 1103, concerning approving and extension of the temporary moratorium on short-term rentals. And Madam Secretary, could you please read that header into the record?
An ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havity Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11 E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article and the Land Use Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and Sections 33 and 34 of the Havity Grace City Charter, to extend the temporary moratorium on the approval and issuance of permits within the city's municipal limits for short-term rentals.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. Any member of the audience here this evening to speak on ordinance 1103? Sir? Yes, sir, please, thank you. Good evening, welcome to the public hearing. And if you wouldn't mind, could we please have your name and address for the record, sir?
Justin Waskevich, 554 Franklin Street, Havity Grace.
Welcome.
Thank you. So I don't know exactly, I didn't really prepare much to say, but we read about this moratorium a while back when it was first put into place. And so I have my wife here, Kimberly, my son Isaac, and that's Nora. We run the Isaac's Enorable Home on Franklin Street in Havity Grace. So I'm not sure if you've seen, but we were featured on WBAL. It was like a local hotspot. Isaac's Enorable Home is a place that is, it does have a short-term rental aspect to it. Right now, we have one room that is a short-term rental. However, the bottom part of the house is an art gallery dedicated to people with disabilities. So we are an organization where we provide paint events to, we go to the Arc, Northern Chesapeake, we go to the Hartford Center, and we have painting events where the artwork for these artists are featured in the home for travelers who come all around to explore Havity Grace, spend their money in Havity Grace, and also enjoy this artwork provided by individuals with disabilities. We started this house in honor of my daughter Nora, who has Down Syndrome. So we wanted to provide some sort of a way to give them employment when they're older, if she were to need some help and assistance as she becomes an adult and she, you know, she wants to have some sort of a business. So we thought this was a great idea. A part of Isaac's Enorable Home on Franklin Street is also a way for us to provide employment for people with disabilities. People with disabilities have little to no jobs. The unemployment rate is astronomical, so we want to provide that. Our plans to have employment at Isaac's Enorable Home include helping us with paint events, hosting and managing the short-term rentals, managing the property, things of that nature. So part of why we're here is just to kind of advocate the idea of a short-term rental in Havity Grace. If there's anything, we know a number of the other owners and operators of some other short-term rentals in Havity Grace. If there's anything that we as an organization can do to make it easier for Havity Grace to come up with some sort of a guideline for these rentals to stay in place, we would love to be a part of that and be on the ground floor of that. Not really a whole lot else to say, other than, you know, we, as far as our property, we are extremely selective when it comes to those that we rent to. We have a very important vetting process. We don't rent to partiers or any of this kind of nature. I read in the moratorium that there were concerns with parking and noise and all this kind of things. Our main goal is to attract tourists to come to Havity Grace, to eat at the restaurants, to hang out at the places that we all enjoy in Havity Grace, see the different aspects. In fact, on April 29th, just a quick plug, we are having a Havity Grace-wide scavenger hunt to help raise money for a wheelchair ramp to access the art gallery. The idea of the scavenger hunt and the short-term rental is to provide awareness to Havity Grace, the tourists, and to make it a really fun-loving town. And I hope anybody would want to come by and take a look at it. It's a blue house with a bright yellow door. We have a Down Syndrome flag that sits out front. We put some kindness, love, and accepting pavers out front, really trying to make this neighborhood and this particular block really pretty. So anything we can do to be a part of that, we'd love to hear from everybody. And I have some cards here that I can leave with you. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Is there any questions for me?
Actually, I want to commend you for bringing your family out, because I love seeing that, I love seeing the kids involved as well. I've spent my entire career working for Social Security Disability. I understand exactly what you're doing. I want you to set you at ease with this ordinance right here. This, all this one is doing is just pushing it back a little bit to save us money on mailing. But what you're doing, love it, everything's great.
I'm happy to hear that.
We actually came up with the, you can go back and actually see the discussions and stuff about the short-term rental ordinance that we put together. And I think everything's available on the website. And, you know, if you need any help from us, you can reach out to us as well.
I will certainly do that, I appreciate that so much. And thank you all for your time.
Oh, Isaac, can I get one of your cards?
Absolutely, I have it right here.
That's cool, man, I'll distribute them, yeah, thanks. Councilor Zinner?
It's good to see you, yes, yep, yep. We graduated Hartford Leadership Academy together.
Yeah, New Hartford Leadership, class of 2019.
Yeah, yep, yep, so it's nice seeing you.
Yeah, so it's great to see you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Good to see Nora in person.
Yep, yep, there she is back there.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Have a great evening.
Take care, guys, yeah?
Oh, sorry.
Um, scavenger hunt?
It's April 29th.
Okay, great.
And we're taking donations, and then it's a $10 fee, and you get like a little prize, and we'll give you a list of all the places in Havity Grace that we really enjoy. And you just go, you take a selfie, and you do a hashtag, and it goes to our social media. We have a pretty large social media following. We're connected with like WBAL and a bunch of other locations. So it'd be nice to kind of continue to provide that business positivity for Havity Grace and let people all around the country and the world, you know, come and see Havity Grace for what it is.
Thank you for coming in, I appreciate it. And thank you for posting it on social media. I was able to see it advertised and read a little bit about your honorable house, Isaac's honorable house.
Thank you very much, yes, I appreciate it, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, we're still on our public hearing for ordinance 1103. Any other member of the audience wish to speak? Any further comments from the council? Okay, without any further comments, I now close public hearing on ordinance 1103, the time is 7:11. Our final public hearing tonight will be on ordinance 1104, 1104, concerning approving, affirming, and ratifying the agreement to supply municipal water to the city of Aberdeen. Madam Secretary, could you please read the header for ordinance 1104?
An ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of Havity Grace, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11 E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and Sections 33 and 34 of the Havity Grace City Charter, for the purpose of approving, affirming, and ratifying the agreement to supply municipal water to the city of Aberdeen.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. Anyone in the audience this evening here to speak on ordinance 1104? Sir? Good evening and welcome, maybe please have your name and address for the record.
My name is Kirk Smith, and I'm hesitant to keep giving my address because I'm getting threats. I did fill out a piece of paper, my address is on there, so... We live in a cruel world where people want to... Oh, anyways, I'm just gonna go on. I have a couple of questions. I thought we did this in 2020. I mean, I looked at all the signatures that I can remember celebrating, because I thought this was a cool feather in the hat for everybody that sat up there. And the fact that the mayor, Steve, DPW, Tim, and everybody got all this ratified in 2020. Where are we at? There's some valve that needs to get done or something, did I read that? Why do we gotta ratify it again? 1104, the...
So, yeah, on 1104, so the original ratification was by ordinance, or by resolution. This is by ordinance, so we are codifying and putting into law.
I get it.
Yes, rather than a resolve, we're ordaining.
I like that. That explains something right there. When do we get to sell it? I mean, this is a 700, potentially a $730,000 a year, you know, plus up to the Water and Sewer Fund. Assuming that, you know...
You're asking when?
Yeah, when do we turn on the valve?
Our side of the line is ready. We're in a, still have a vault agreement we need to sign with Hartford County. That's not holding it up. Aberdeen has got their line in. They have to finish a couple pumping stations in order to get the, to start receiving the water. So as soon as they give us the word, we'll turn on the spigot.
Excellent, that is great news. You guys are doing fantastic with this, but you need to stay on it because it is Hartford County. They didn't like this agreement, I'm not gonna lie to you. I broached it a couple of times with a couple of the older council members, including our council president that's out there, and they were beyond themselves that Havity Grace was going to take one of their customers. And they just did not want to support it. However, our new council member, council member Bennett, seems to be much more receptive to what Havity Grace wants than our former council member, who remains a nice guy and a great person. Just maybe not a good fit for Havity Grace, so thank you very much. I may have further questions in item six. Yes, sir?
In response to your request, the other part of this is called COVID-19. And all the issues with COVID-19, the contractors, so the prices have gone up. It was trying to get the contractors to continue honoring their contracts as well as all the new contracts they were accepting. So that also put a little bit of a slowdown on the construction. In Havity Grace, we had all the granite when we were...
Wait a minute, Councilmember Martin? Well... Namaste, please continue, sir.
Well, I got 30 seconds yet.
Yes, sir.
The construction we ran into some issues too, as well, just in digging and putting down the pipe. So, but the bigger, one of the biggest issues was the fact that COVID-19 hit, and it slowed everything down as far as contractors' responses and their willingness to complete. They did it, but again, it's also obtaining the construction material because the cost of construction materials going up, and they were selling stuff to other contracts and not necessarily to the vendors working on that line. So no, Aberdeen proceeded very quickly with theirs. The city has gotten, as we said, our sections done. We have no issues with the county. The county is in fact working with us to allow us to move forward. So I understand the comment about some bad blood, there is really no bad blood. We're moving forward, and mid-2024, we expect fiscal year, we expect to have this where we're making money again.
Sometime around October, November? That mid, our fiscal year starts January or July?
Starts July.
Yeah.
So it's again, it's what it appears to be. Yeah, moving forward, we expect to start seeing some of those expenses recouped and money actually coming back into the city.
That would be great, and that's, you know, it's good that this was pushed as a prime project out of the bond money, because everything else is a cost, whereas this is a inflow, so to speak, even though we're exflowing water. Thank you so much for your time tonight. Great answers, greatly appreciated, Director of Administration, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We're still on ordinance 1104, public hearing. Any other members of the audience wish to speak? Any comments from the council? Councilmember Boyer, you have a question?
My question is in regards to threats. I think it's crazy to think that anybody who comes up here and speaks their mind as a member of our community receives threats from any member of our community because they had taken their absolute right to come here and express their viewpoint. And I would hope that we are strongly going to go after anybody who seeks to restrain anyone's right to speak publicly, especially before this council, because you're speaking before your community and you're letting us know what your concerns are. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other further questions? All right, with numerous comments from the public or the council, I now declare public hearing on ordinance 1104 to be concluded. The time is now 7:19. Okay, time to roll into our council meeting. Let's begin the council meeting. Welcome, everybody, it is April 17, 2023. The time is now 7:20 PM. I call to order a meeting of Havity Grace Mayor and City Council. I will call the role of attendance. Council President Ringsucker?
Here.
Councilmember Robertson?
Here.
Councilmembers Zinner?
Here.
Councilmember Boyer?
Here.
Councilmember Shenegas?
Here.
Councilmember Martin?
Here.
All council members are present and accounted for. If everybody could please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and the opening prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I could kindly ask everyone to remain standing, as it gives me always great privilege and pleasure to invite Reverend Gene Proud of the Proud Evangelistic Association up to give our opening prayers evening. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Yeah, substitute is in. Can I start with something a little different this time, with your permission? I want to say something to Risa.
Absolutely.
Oh, yes. Risa, I'm gonna miss you. You've done a lot for me to help me get learned what I'm supposed to do for the council. You've done a lot to keep me out of trouble. And I want to thank you and bless you for that. And bless you for what you're going to do in the future. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Let's pray. Father, this council has many things that they must decide for the safety and health and well-being of we the people. Give them all the wisdom and knowledge and understanding that they need and all the patience to deal with us so that everything can be done wisely and well, and for the honor of your Son Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Reverend Proud, thank you for your words, thank you. It's a sign. Deliver some darkness at light. Item number five on this evening's agenda is gonna be approval of minutes. City Council meeting minutes, April 3, 2023. Council have a motion to approve?
So.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Zinner, seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. City Council meeting minutes of April 3, 2023 are approved by Council 6-0 in the affirmative. Item B, City Council Public Work Session Meeting Minutes on the proposed fiscal year 2020 for a budget. These are the council meeting minutes of the public work session on the budget. That was held on April 10, 2023. Council have a motion to approve?
So moved.
motion by... motion by Councilmember Boyer, seconded by Councilmember Martin. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. City Council Public Work Session Meeting Minutes, uh, the proposed FY 2024 budget that was held on April 10th, 2023. Those minutes are approved, 6-0 in the affirmative. Item six on this agenda is going to be comments from citizens. So there's a nice number of citizens in the audience, so I will just let everybody know that this is the part of this evening's, uh, meeting that if you're here to speak on an agenda item, now's the time to do so. But if you're also here to speak on something that's not an agenda item, just another matter of city business, it's also the time to do so as well. So what I usually do is anybody that prefilled out a form to speak, I will call on those citizens first. And when I'm done with the forms, I will open up the floor to anyone who wishes to speak. Okay? So we'll start with, um, Bob Rudy. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Great, good to have you here. Can we just please have your name and address for the record, please?
It's Robert J. Rudy, 3145 East Nobles Mill Road, Darlington, Maryland.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. Uh, by my, I, I was born in Harvard of Grace, left when I was six years old, wandered around, went to Virginia and been all over the place between here and there. Came back to Harford County when Becca Gardner Rudy and I met each other. She had a farm up here and I was living in Baltimore at the time and went back and forth between Baltimore and the farm. And three years ago decided to sell the house and closed my law practice in Baltimore and I came up here. So good to be back pretty close to, to where I was born. I also share that I, uh, I served on the City Council for Columbia, Maryland, 1986, 1990. So I have a little understanding of some of the types of things that, that you all are involved with. Uh, pleased to be with you this evening on the, uh, and, uh, requests for your application for a special event permit for the Golden Rule. I think you've got the materials on the Golden Rule, so I, I won't go into them very far. Uh, I wanted to thank, uh, Mr., uh, Patrick, uh, S- Siple, uh, Lifts, uh, when he helped us get an application, a permit for the, uh, slip for the, the boat a couple of months ago. I didn't know we had to have a special permit for this, uh, occasion. So when we learned about that about a couple of weeks ago, that's why we're here this evening. I'm a member of the, I served in the military in 1965, 68. Uh, I, uh, I'm a member of the American Legion, I'm an American, a member of the Veterans of Foreign Wars. I'm also a member of Veterans for Peace. I like the organization a lot. They were created in 1985 to try to make, help the American public understand some of the costs of war. Uh, Golden Rule is sailing this time to lift up, uh, trying to encourage the elimination of nuclear weapons throughout the world, uh, that I think all of us would be happy to see happen. There's a United Nations Resolution that was passed in 2017 to abolish nuclear weapons. It's been signed by 67 nations. Hadn't been signed by any of the nine countries that have nuclear weapons. We understand that and don't expect it to be signed the next day or so. But that's the mission that the Golden Rule is undertaking, to lift this up for public understanding. And, uh, we're hoping to have an opportunity to, uh, for the, the vote to stop here, uh, for four days. It's, uh, in Maryland after it left Minnesota and went around the Gulf of Mexico and up the Atlantic coast. It's, uh, in Washington DC, Baltimore, Indianapolis, coming here and it leaves here, it goes up to Philadelphia and will eventually end up New York and then back to, back to Chicago eventually. So, uh, I hope you approve our application for the special event. I hope you come if you do and visit the Golden Rule while I was here and delighted to meet you briefly this evening. Beck and I are the coordinators for this activity here. We got drafted into this because of our Quaker involvement, but there's, we're doing presentations. Some of the crew members will do presentations at the Deer Creek Meeting in, in Darlington. We hope at the Unitarian Meeting in, uh, in Bel Air, maybe at the Harford Community College. So, uh, we're delighted and excited to have them in town and, and hope that you approve our application. Any questions?
Council, any questions? Sir, thank you very much.
Pleasure to meet you. Thank you.
Next form, I'd like to, or next filled out form I have, I'd like to call Nancy Lanham. Say your last name correctly?
Yes.
Welcome. May be pleased to have your name and address for the record.
Uh, Nancy Lanham, 1302 Courier Street, Harvard of Grace.
Welcome.
Hi. I've never done this, but, um, I have a terrible problem with lantern flies. I can hardly, I brought some pictures. I, I can hardly go outside in the summer. It began last June. I've used every pesticide that I can legally get. I had an exterminator. I've called the city and the county and no one's been able to help. These are just like a few pictures out my back door. I had to drain my swimming pool in June because there were so many lantern flies. I can hardly come in and out. They come in the house, they try to get in the garage, they just, they're all over you. I can't, you know, I, was able to be outside at all in the summer, any family over anything. And I just don't know what to do, how to get rid of them. I mean, I, as soon as, first thing, I opened my drape in the, you know, in the morning, they're crawling on my French door windows. And I put neem oil, I put everything I can. I have electric, um, swatters to get them. And I, I really need help with them. I don't know where to, what to do to, to get rid of them. They're horrible. And they're, I have those sticky, everything I can try or do, I've tried to do, and they're just relentless. And there is a, um, where there, a lot of them, there's a group of trees below my driveway, you know where, and that seems to be a lot of where the infestation is. And those trees just grew up from weeds since I've been there. And I really don't know who they belong to. I guess some would belong to the leeway of the, I don't know if they're the leeway of the city or not, but a lot of them are in that grouping of trees. So I don't know if that would even be a solution to remove those trees or, I don't know, but I'm just, I'm just, uh, within, I don't, you know, trying to anticipate, we've had such a warm winter and the spring coming to be sworn with those again and not be able to go outside or do yard work or do anything. So if any help you could offer would be wonderful.
Never, um, the pictures I've seen, I've never seen so many lantern flies before. Um, are all your neighbors like that or just you?
As far, I don't, as far as I know, just me. I had called, I called the city and the county, the, um, health department. Um, they referred me to the Department of Agriculture. This was all last June and I called them. And in August, the Department of Agriculture came over to stop when I was watering flowers and said that that was the worst infestation they've ever seen. I didn't have any more response. I called there several times and I got no response. Um, because I, someone had said, uh, my, I went, Norset Veterans Administration, had advised me to call and try to get, um, spray, my yard sprayed for mosquitoes since they had nothing specifically for lantern flies. So the Department of Agriculture. So like I said, they came out finally in August. There was no follow-up. I called several times, I got no return calls or anything. So I, I just, I don't know what to do about it.
Hold on one second.
So if I could interject real quick, there is one tree that is known to be a magnet for the lantern flies and that is the, I'm trying to make sure I had it before, the Tree of Heaven. So if, if that is one of the trees that's in that clumping, that could be a, a very good explanation of it. That's putting there. No, but also I am not an expert. I've just been, been watching along because I too had a lot. So one of the things that they definitely say is on your trees, go and see if you can see the eggs now and scrape them off before they hatch and kill them. But again, with as many as you're showing, there's probably an incredible amount. Um, the one thing I can say is at the end of last year, um, the Department of Agriculture was, um, noting that local species of birds were starting to eat the lantern flies. Before that, they were, they had never been introduced to them, so they're starting to eat it a little bit. So they don't, didn't expect it to be, um, as horrific as they were expecting because of the, you know, nature is taking its course. But, but the biggest thing is if you have that, that tree, that is something that they're absolutely attracted to. I think maple is the other tree too that they're, um, attracted to, but not to the same extent.
The Department of Agriculture identified those tr- clumping of trees as the ones you're speaking about, yeah.
Tree of Heaven?
And they, um, showed me where they, because those are sap suckers and they eat into the trees which kill them. And there's, they usually use a, a banding down low to-
Yeah, it's like a, a sticky substance that philosophically, but it kills everything, including ants and anything else that goes up. So it's not necessarily good for the environment either.
Right. No, well, it wouldn't be possible these days anyway because they said they've never seen them where they have gone all the way up the trees and on the limbs and everything. It's a very, it's a bad infestation and, but they're not my trees. And I don't know, but they're, they're, they're infested with them, but they're right next to me and they're on, you know, I don't, I don't know what to do.
Mr. Gambitoya?
Yeah, so, uh, Mayor, first thing in the morning, I'll have Mr. Conaway go up and see if that's one of our right of ways. We do have a sewer line that runs an easement back behind Nancy's house. So we'll look at that, but, uh, you're, you're both correct. So the, the Tree of Heaven is a indigenous, is not an indigenous species here, it's from China. So it's a, a plant that they're, the lantern flies are very used to. It's odd because this weekend, yesterday, uh, because it was so nice out, I commented to my wife, I've not seen one lantern fly, uh, this year, but now I know where they all are.
Yes, they're, yes.
So have Mr. Conaway go up and at the same time, we'll contact, uh, the exchange again, Agricultural Exchange and ask them to come up, uh, come up as well.
That would be great. That would be very, very, very helpful.
Look on your house as well to see if there's any egg sacs on your house as well. Um, I had some on the front or my, where the, um, uh, like the fake brick or fake rock on the front of mine, there was a lot on there. So make sure you scrape there as well. It's not just on the trees.
Yeah, I, I found like two areas on my deck and I scraped those off and put rubbing alcohol, whatever they say to do, I do it. But I haven't really inspected that, the house, so I'll do that this weekend. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Nancy. We're sorry about your, the issue. We hope it's not as bad this year and maybe-
Oh, my gosh.
-do a few things remediate it. Uh, your pictures, are those pictures over there?
Oh, gosh.
Yeah, don't want to lose those pictures. They're, uh, put them in Ripley's Believe It or Not.
Nancy, Nancy, could I get those and I'll scan them in and I'll bring them up to you tomorrow? Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy. Have a good evening.
Your consideration and your help. I appreciate it.
I do have another filled out form. Um, Mr. Kirk Smith, did you have any further comments? Said water stuff on here.
I did cover most of it. Thank you so much. Um, I appreciate the fact that the mayor put out the fee increase that's going to be coming up to the water and, uh, water system for a thousand gallons for the residents. I want to, uh, deviate just a little bit. It's morale mushroom season. If you don't know what you're doing, don't collect any. Just leave them, call me, I'll come collect them. That's funny, but it's also truthful because the jinmitoria season is now also. They're not as good for you. If you don't cook them, just right, parboil three times, they will make you wish you were dead. But on to, uh, the incel stage of the spotted lantern flies. One of my spots that I check here in town, it's a nice wooded area that the city owns and great pickleball courts too. So I go around there and I circle around quite a bit. Go to my garden, I garden, I hit the woods, I try to find mushrooms. Found like eight pounds of chicken in the woods there this weekend, so it was a great day. But, uh, what I also seen was a lot of spotted lantern flies and they're in their incel stage where they're all kind of like in a mass, they come from their seeds, pods, sorry, their insect pods. So they are coming. I would imagine they're already good down by the water where it's been a little more moist, but they are coming to the rest of us. I crushed as many as I could find, including sweeping the eggs off, but there's only so much any person can do. Unless you got two pettys, me, name me, go and Tessie, who will eat any of them that come up on the porch, just do what you can, folks. They're coming. She's not far off. They're small right now. They're easy to just, oh, my boot. But, uh, yeah. Anyways, I see it and I agree, it's been five years. I am concerned that, uh, I guess it's, you know, contractual, so it is, you know, we're going to be using more chemicals to make this extra water. Guess get ahead of it before it gets bad.
Well, it should be the same amount of chemicals, just more money to pay for the chemicals.
I would think we would have to use more chemicals to treat the water.
We've been making, if you talk to the water plant supervisor, we make water the same way we've done since the plant opened in 1950s. It's just-
How many gallons are we putting?
Cost of materials is keep going up.
Yeah, how many gallons are we using in the city?
How many does the city use?
Yeah.
Eh, a little hair under three million a day.
Nice.
But I think, uh, what the mayor's alluding to, if I'm correct, is that the, uh, the capacity exists already. Whether or not it's used, um, this is just taking the existing capacity and-
Yeah, I understood that. Just, I'm concerned that, you know, is there a way that we can lock in a contract for these chemicals before the prices go up again? I, I believe that the just-in-time delivery system is going to screw us all, so.
Right. So just-in-time, uh, delivery is sort of a thing of the past.
Good.
Right? Just, you can't, we can't do that anymore, uh, for a, a number of reasons. So our procurement officer is constantly looking and we, uh, uh, dovetail onto state, county, and any federal, uh, uh, procurement bids that we can to get the best possible price. It's just industry, industry-wide that the materials costs are going up. Um, and the, to the mayor's point, we've been making water virtually the same way since the 50s. Excuse me, with the exception of we've, uh, the chlorination process, uh, we have a much safer and we keep less amount, a lesser amount of chlorine in the, the water plant now than we ever did, so.
Thank you again, Mr. Gambitoya. That was it. Um, you guys answered most of the questions during the public hearing, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, that was, um, my last pre-filled out speaker form. So now what I'll do is, we're still under comments from citizens. Again, this is either on agenda items or any other business of the city. Is anyone, uh, in the audience at large wish to address the council for any matter of business? Any comments from council? Okay, we will move forward to item seven. Item seven is appointments. This evening, we have no appointments. Item eight is recognitions. This evening, we have no recognitions. Item nine, proclamations. We have no proclamations this evening. Item 10 is presentations and there's no presentations this evening. See how this works? Oh, wait a minute, sorry. Resolutions, okay. Yes, we're resolutions. We have a couple of resolutions, uh, on the docket here. And the first one's going to be, um, resolution going to be handled by Council, Council President Ringsucker. Deals with, um, charter amendment, resolution concerning requiring budget amendments by ordinance and, uh, Council President.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I make a motion to, to introduce charter amendment resolution- Mr. Mayor, council, I make a motion to introduce charter amendment resolution concerning requiring budget amendments by ordinance for first reading.
Second. Council have a motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Robertson. This is a motion to introduce a charter amendment, resolution, requiring budget amendments by ordinance. Questions or comments on the introduction of this ordinance, or I'm sorry, resolution? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Charter amendment resolution introduction carries six zero in affirmative. Madam Secretary, could you please read the header of this charter resolution?
Yes, okay. This will be Charter Resolution 293. A resolution by the mayor and city council of Havity Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of the Maryland Constitution, Article 11E, the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland and the Havity Grace City Charter, Section 19, amending in part, Section 37F and 19A of the city charter, generally pertaining to budget amendments, repealing the requirement that budget amendments be approved by resolution, requiring budget amendments be approved by ordinance.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. Council have a motion to adopt Charter Amendment Resolution 293.
So moved. Second.
Pushed by Councilmember Martin, seconded by the Council President. Questions or comments? Council President.
This is an effort to, just like, I think last meeting we had some, and you're going to be seeing a lot more of these resolutions that will bring our process up to the state requirements. So, this is now going to be, budget amendments will be done by ordinance as per the state requirements.
Thank you, Council President. Any other questions or comments? Okay, very well. Without any further questions or comments, I'll do a roll call vote on this charter amendment resolution. Councilmember Shenegas?
Yes.
Councilmember Zinner?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
By a roll call vote of six zero in affirmative, city charter, city charter amendment resolution concerning requiring budget amendments by ordinance is approved and adopted by council, six zero in affirmative. Being a charter amendment resolution, we need to have a public hearing. Council President?
How about May 1st?
May 1st, uh, May 15th?
Yes, sir. So, due to this being a charter amendment, we have to publicize for several weeks, so we'll publicize in the paper on the 21st, the 28th, and the 5th, and then the public hearing will be on the 15th.
Okay, makes, that's what I thought, I was thinking is it'd be a couple of weeks, okay. No worries.
It's gonna be the same for the next one.
Yes, the next one's gonna be. Okay, we will have a public hearing on this, May 15th, right here, at the city council chamber, 7 o'clock.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just a point of clarification, here on the resolution where, I think it's line 86 of page two, the effective date is the 50th day, is that just referring to the amendment, the resolution amendment that's not referring to the actual budget amendments as they move forward, right? Because if we're doing a budget amendment by ordinance, there's an amount of time that we would have to wait before it's codified, correct? And if that's the case, should we be able to waive those in the future? Is this language just referring to the resolution?
Just to the resolution.
To the resolution.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Roberts. Item B, Charter Amendment Resolution Concerning Authorizing Certain Personnel to Enter Into Certain Agreements. Council President?
Mr. Mayor, council, I make a motion to introduce a charter amendment resolution concerning authorizing certain personnel to enter into certain agreements for first reading.
Second.
Council have a motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. Was it Shenegas?
It was a tie.
They both said it at the exact same time.
Okay, all right.
I thought it was gonna confuse you.
Taggo instead of runner. All right. Motion by Council President, seconded by Councilmember Shenegas, and it's a motion to introduce a resolution. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce a resolution carries six zero in affirmative. Madam Secretary, can you please read the header and assign this charter amendment resolution number, please?
Yes, this will be Charter Resolution 294. A resolution by the mayor and city council of Havity Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Maryland Constitution, Article 11-E, the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland and the Havity Grace City Charter, Section 19, amending in part, Section 37G of the city charter, generally pertaining to the execution of the annual budget ordinance, authorizing certain personnel to enter into certain agreements, authorizing the creation of administrative rules and procedures to carry out subsection.
Very well, thank you very much, Madam Secretary. Council have a motion to adopt Charter Amendment Resolution 294.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by the Council President and seconded by Councilmember Robertson. Questions or comments? Council President?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to defer to the Director of Administration for further explanation.
Certainly. So, under the Express Powers Act or document through the state of Maryland, there's a number of things that we're not consistent with within our charter and within ordinances for providing express powers to the Director of Administration to execute contracts and anything that has been budgeted and approved by the council, either by the budget ordinance or a budget amendment. So, this was part of the ratification and updating that Mr. Rochinsky had met, I think, with two or three council members at a time. Councilmember Robertson, I think you were on TDY or when, when this occurred. So, this is the first wave of those items that are going to be coming through both by either charter amendments and/or by ordinance. So, you'll see another one this evening that would give a similar authority under an ordinance arrangement. So, that's what it is, it's not, it's not allowing me to do anything more than what I've really have been doing, but it wasn't, it won't allow me to do anything without the council's initial approval through those types of processes. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Gambitoya. Council President, I yield back to you.
I think I'm done, thank you.
Okay, any other further questions or comments? Okay, council will do a roll call vote on Charter Resolution 294. Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Zinner?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
By roll call vote of six zero in affirmative, Charter Amendment Resolution 294 is adopted and approved by council, and Council President, May 15th?
May 15th it is.
Okay, we'll do a public hearing on Charter Resolution 293 and 294 preceding the council meeting on May 19th, right here, 7 o'clock.
Did you say 15th or 19th?
Say 19th? Say 15th?
15th.
It's a 15th.
15th, yeah. All right.
I, I was not attentive, but Ms. Laird was.
All right, we're good, May 23rd. I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. May 15th, May 15th, everything, at the next, or it's the second council meeting in May. May 15th, we'll have both 293 and 294 public hearing. See, they should never have council meetings on Mondays, that's where, that's like, whoever picked Monday as a council meeting back in 1878 was like, come on, man, Mondays are the, we're all just trying to get back, you know, we should be having one like Wednesday night or something, you know?
It's funny, because I know a process to change that.
Put it on Monday night.
I feel like I've been saying that for a while.
Well, you could, I know.
Then, you know, the election, that'll just ruin everything, it won't fall into sequences nice.
I know, it would just put everything out, kill them, there's like, all these like, mental mistakes on Mondays. Okay, fair enough, we're gonna go to ordinances, item 12, and see how we can screw this up, so. We, we do have four ordinances this evening, a couple of second readings and a couple of first readings, and the first one is going to be item A, it's going to be ordinance number 1100, concerning accepting a deed of easement for sanitary sewer to include sewer pump station and force main at the Maryland National Guard. This is a second reading for ordinance 1100, and I'll hand this off to Councilmember Zinner for the introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to introduce ordinance number 1100 concerning the accepting a deed of easement for sanitary sewer to include sewer pump station and force main at the Maryland National Guard. It's a second reading for adoption.
Second.
Council have a motion by Councilmembers Zinner and seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. This is a motion to introduce ordinance 1100 on second reading. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce ordinance 1100 on second reading carries six zero in the affirmative. Madam Secretary, could you please read the header for ordinance 1100 into the record?
An ordinance of the mayor and city council of Havity Grace, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland and Section 33 and 34 of the Havity Grace City Charter, for the purpose of accepting a deed of easement with respect to sanitary sewer to include sewer pump station and force main located on property of the Maryland National Guard.
Excellent, thank you very much, Madam Secretary. Council have a motion to adopt ordinance 1100 on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Zinner. Questions or comments? Council President?
Sir, if I could have the, do you have the papers to pass out?
Yes, sir.
The Director of Administration has papers that were prepared by our attorney, Ms. Ishak. We're just changing the signatories on the, the deed itself to what was required by the National Guard. So, you guys will see here, you'll see the names and like, the changes will be highlighted. They're minimal.
Are the changes highlighted in yellow?
Yeah, just on the front, it says sewer facilities, and then I think the only changes after that are the signatories on the back, correct?
Yes. Go ahead, April.
Yeah, if I, if I may, there are very minor changes, and I think it was alluded to at the last meeting with the public hearing, so at the time, the governor's office wasn't sure whose names needed to be on there and what their approval process was, and then the interim, I think I added two more words, I think I added city up at the top there and then over here, and then I think Mr. Malizer's name was misspelled on the last page, I caught that, so we fixed that. So, it's just minor things, but I wanted to make sure the public record had the actual document that should be attached to that ordinance. So, there's no need for you to actually approve the actual changes, it's just an update to what the attachment was.
So, we don't need a motion?
You don't need a mo, you just need a motion to replace this document with the one that was on the original.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to replace the existing document with the current document recently handed out by the Director of Administration and our city attorney.
Second.
Have a motion by Council President, seconded by Councilmember Zinner?
Yes.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Zinner. This is a motion to replace the documents with the signatories on it. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries six zero in affirmative. Thank you, Council President. Proceed. Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Councilmember Zinner?
Yes, this work has been completed. The easement is for, if there's needs for repair, or to check it for any reason at all, so that way the city's able to go in and evaluate any requirements to fix something or to investigate any problems.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Zinner. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Boyer?
I guess it's more procedural, so the Maryland, the Maryland Department of the Militia is now known as the Maryland Military Department, and according to the ordinance, that we're saying, we're using the old terminology, Department of the Militia, and, and referring them, renaming it as the Maryland Army National Guard, but in effect, it is also now known as the Maryland Military Department. I'm just, there's like three different names.
You can amend the ordinance to be consistent, or you can leave it as it is, it's just a function of that one gets recorded in the land records, just like we use the city of Havity Grace, but our official name is Mayor and City Council of Havity Grace. If we want to change it there and make it exact as it is on there, you can amend the ordinance to make that change. I did not make that change, because that's not my place, but if you want to make that change on the ordinance, you can move to amend the ordinance to match the current easement, which we ju, we just got that language. What is it?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, maybe this may clarify, so in the first whereas, it explains that the Department of Militia is now known as the Maryland Military Department. So, I think what's in the ordinance, sort of, it gets clarified in this document that the names are synonymous.
It's in this document, yeah.
Yeah, so I would say either by a friendly amendment, if at all, or, you know, this, this document I think would guide you to making sure that you're, we're talking about the same location.
I would propose just a friendly amendment to change the Maryland Department of the Militia to the current terminology, which is the Maryland Military Department.
And, and just to clarify, the, the reason it's in the easement, the deed of easement that way is because they index the names according to whatever it's called in that document, so, yep.
Council, any objections to a friendly amendment to make the wording consistent? No objections? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're back on the question here, for ordinance 1100, second reading, we have a motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Zinner. Any other further questions or comments? Council, we're gonna do a roll call vote on 1100. Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Zinner?
Yes.
Council President Ring Sucker?
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas?
Yes.
By a roll call vote of six zero in affirmative, ordinance 1100 concerning accepting a deed of easement for sanitary sewer to include sewer pump station and force main at the Maryland National Guard is approved and adopted, six zero in affirmative. Thank you very much, council. We're gonna go to item B, which is gonna be ordinance 1101, up for a second reading, and I'll hand it off to Councilmember Zinner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to introduce ordinance number 1101 concerning accepting a deed of easement for a water line at the Maryland National Guard on second reading for adoption.
Second.
Council have a motion by Councilmembers Zinner, seconded by Councilmember Robertson. It's a motion to introduce ordinance 1101 on second reading. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce an ordinance on, or, sorry, motion to introduce ordinance 1101 on second reading carries six zero in affirmative. Madam Secretary, could you please read the header into the record for 1101?
An ordinance of the mayor and city council of Havity Grace, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland and Sections 33 and 34 of the Havity Grace City Charter, for the purpose of accepting a deed of easement with respect to a water line located on property of the Maryland National Guard.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. Council have a motion to adopt ordinance 1101 on second reading.
So moved. Second.
A motion by Councilmember Boyer, seconded by Councilmember Zinner. Questions or comments? Council President?
All right, once again, we are changing the language and the signatories, and again, we don't have to amend it to put that in there, but I would like to make a friendly amendment to adopt the language in the previous bill to be consistent with the current bill. So, the one before was the sewer, this is the water line. I'm asking for a friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment, council, any objections to the Council President's request? All right, say that is, we'll do it. Thank you very much, Council President. Anything else?
No, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Zinner?
This is just very similar to the one we just approved, and... This is just very similar to the one we just approved and, uh, again, it's the water line and again, the city has the right to, uh, go on the property and correct any defects or make improvements, et cetera.
Thank you very much, council members in. Any other questions or comments before the roll call? Okay, counsel, this is going to be a roll call on ordinance eleven oh one on second reading. Council member Robertson?
Yes.
Council member Zinner?
Yes.
Councilor Martin?
Yes.
Council president?
Yes.
Council member Shenegas?
Yes.
Council mayor Boyer?
Yes.
By roll call vote of six zero in the affirmative, city council ordinance eleven oh one concerning accepting a deed of easement for a water line at the Maryland National Guard is adopted and approved by council on second reading. Okay, we are going to go to item C concerning amending, concerning amending the city code chapter twenty-five. And I will hand it off to the council president.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, I make a motion to introduce an ordinance concerning amending city code chapter twenty-five, boards, committees, and commissions for first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by the council president, seconded by council member Shenegas. This is a motion to introduce an ordinance. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce an ordinance carries six zero in affirmative. Madam Secretary, could you please assign this ordinance a number and read the header into the record?
This will be ordinance number eleven zero five. An ordinance by the mayor and city council of Havity Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article eleven E of the Maryland Constitution, the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland, and sections thirty-three and thirty-four of the Havity Grace City Charter to amend city code twenty-five, boards, committees, and commissions, Article one, section twenty-five dash zero, duty to report.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. Counsel, I have a motion to adopt ordinance eleven oh five.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by council president and a seconded by council members in. Questions or comments? Council president?
Um, this, uh, ordinance, all it is doing is, uh, codifying the amendment to our city code to remove the requirement of our boards and commissions and committees to report in person once a year, um, altogether, but rather, we're going to default to what's actually written in their charter for their, uh, um, commissions.
Thank you very much, council president. Any further questions or comments? Counsel roll call vote on ordinance eleven oh five, first reading. Councilor Boyer?
Yes.
Councilor Martin?
Yes.
Councilor Shenegas?
Yes.
Councilor Robertson?
Yes.
Council members in.
Yes.
Council president?
Yes.
My roll call vote is six zero in affirmative. City council ordinance eleven oh five is adopted on first reading. Now, is May first sound for a public hearing?
May first is what I got.
All right, May first, seven o'clock right here proceeding, the next regularly scheduled city council member, or council meeting. We'll have that public hearing on eleven oh five. Okay, our last ordinance of introduction tonight is going to be item D, ordinance concerning delegating additional administrative duties to the director of administration. And, uh, this one will go to the council president.
Mr. Mayor, uh, counsel, I make a motion to introduce an ordinance concerning delegating additional administrative duties to the director of administration for first reading.
Counsel, I have a motion by the council president, I have a second.
Second.
Seconded by councilor Martin. It's a motion to introduce an ordinance. Questions or comments on the introduction of this ordinance? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce an ordinance concerning delegate, excuse me, concerning delegating additional administrative duties to the director of administration carries six zero on the affirmative. Madam Secretary, could you please assign this ordinance a number and read the header into the record?
This will be ordinance number eleven zero six. An ordinance by the mayor and city council of Havity Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article eleven E, the Maryland Constitution, the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland, and sections eighteen, thirty-three, thirty-four, and forty-eight of the Havity Grace City Charter to delegate to the director of administration additional administrative duties.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. Counsel, I have a motion to adopt ordinance eleven oh six on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by councilor Zinner, seconded by councilor Martin. Questions or comments?
Oh, yes, that's me. Uh, sorry, I was looking at recent. Uh, so this is a sister ordinance to the previous one, uh, by delegating, uh, additional authority to the director of administration to handle, uh, administrative tasks, uh, that wouldn't otherwise, uh, be done. We just, we're codifying it into our charter.
Thank you very much, council president. Any other further questions or comments?
From a plate to a platter.
Very well. Roll call vote on eleven oh six. Council president?
Yes.
Councilor Shenegas?
Yes.
Councilor Boyer?
Yes.
Councilor Martin?
Yes.
Councilor Robertson?
Yes.
Councilor Zinner?
Yes.
My roll call vote is six zero in affirmative. City council ordinance eleven oh six is adopted and approved on first reading. Uh, council president, does a May first public hearing work for you as well?
May first works.
All right, May first, right before the regularly scheduled meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we are finished with ordinances and we're going to go to item thirteen this evening, old business. This evening, we have no old business. Item fourteen is going to be special events and we do have four special events and we're going to hand this off to the director of administration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. The first, uh, special event application is for the Golden Rule Peace Boat. A gentleman was, uh, spoke about this this evening under comments from citizens. Uh, this will occur on, begin on Thursday, May fourth. Uh, it will begin at noon. Uh, they'll break down, uh, the event on May the seventh, which is a Sunday at five P.M. The boat will be available for viewing, uh, on May fourth through seventh, uh, one P.M. to four P.M. And May fifth, from five thirty till eight P.M., uh, down at Hutchins Park with a picnic to follow. Uh, this event will occur, uh, the boat will be docked at the slips. Uh, the group will have a, uh, area set up out toward the fishing dock where the boat will be slipped, uh, for view, for, uh, participants to come and view. They expect between eighty and one hundred people. Uh, in your packet is the Golden Rule, uh, peace sailing tour, uh, literature, as well as the Golden Rule news, which gives a background of the, um, of the vessel itself and goes into a little more detail than, than our guest shared this evening. Uh, in the back of your packet, uh, you'll see the site map and of course, then there's the, um, uh, the call sheet. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Camatory. Counsel, I have a motion to approve the Golden Rule Peace Boat. Welcome.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by councilor Martin, seconded by council members in. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I just want to highlight that that's going to be a great weekend for it. Not only is it First Fridays, but it's Defender's Day and blessings by the bay are in Sunday. So it should be a great week for it to be. Thank you.
Absolutely. Very good. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Golden Rule Peace Boat, welcome. May fourth through seventh, two thousand twenty-three, one o'clock to four o'clock, five thirty to eight thirty for peace picnic on five four twenty-three. Hutchins Memorial Park, that event was approved by council, six zero in affirmative. Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hope to see you down there.
You will. Item two, Mr. Camatory.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. This evening, we have an event Jazz by the Bay. This is the Havity Grace High School Music Department. Uh, the onsite contact person and sponsor is, uh, Richard Hoff. Uh, it'll be on Friday, May the twelfth. They'll be setting up about two P.M. The event starts at six P.M., runs until seven with a breakdown of eight. It's down at Concord Point Park. Expect about a hundred or so folks. If you go to the, uh, the end of the package, it has the, uh, the call sheet. And this is a pretty simple event, but one that's been very well attended and one that the citizens have found, uh, uh, very entertaining. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Camatory. Counsel, I have a motion to approve Jazz by the Bay.
So moved.
Second.
Councilor Boyer, seconded by councilor Martin. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Jazz by the Bay, May twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, six P.M. to seven P.M. Concord Point Park is approved by council, six zero in affirmative. Mr. Camatory?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, and counsel, the next, uh, event is the second Sunday Hymnsing. It's, uh, sponsored by the Susquehanna Ministerium. Uh, Jeannie Weaver is the contact person. Uh, this event will occur on, uh, June the eleventh, July the ninth, August the thirteenth, and September the tenth. Uh, it'll, the actual event will be from five to six P.M. with a setup at four and a cleanup at five, uh, six thirty. It's down at the Miller Tydings Park Gazebo. Uh, there's a, a, uh, map along with details of the event in your packet and of course, the last page is the call sheet. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Camatory. Okay, I have a motion to approve second Sunday Hymnsing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by the council president, seconded by councilor Shenegas. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Second Sunday Hymnsing, June eleventh, July ninth, August thirteenth, September tenth, two thousand twenty-three, from five o'clock to six P.M. at Tyings Memorial Park. That event is approved by council, six zero in affirmative. Mr. Camatory?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. The last event this evening is the American Legion Riders Poker Run. Uh, it's sponsored by the Joseph L. Davis American Legion Post forty-seven. Uh, the onsite, uh, contact person is Mike Wade. Uh, this event will occur on Saturday, the twenty-sixth of August. Uh, there is no rain date. Uh, it'll begin set up at eight A.M. The event will start at nine. It'll end at five with a cleanup and breakdown at, uh, six P.M. This will occur at the David Craig Park, uh, where the band will be set up and the parking lot will be, uh, cordoned off for motorcycle parking. The actual, uh, festivities will occur at the American Legion. Uh, there is a, uh, within your packet, a description on page ten of eleven, kind of talks about there is alcohol involved, but it will be on the American Legion property and not on city property. There's a map associated in the, in the, uh, advertisement piece within the packet and the call sheet is at the end of your, uh, of the packet. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Camatory. Counsel, I have a motion to approve the American Legion Ride Poker Run.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by councilor Robertson and seconded by councilor Martin. Questions or comments on the event? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. American Legion, uh, American Legion Riders Poker Run scheduled for August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, nine A.M. to five P.M. David Craig Park. That event is approved, six zero in affirmative. Mr. Camatory, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, uh, we're going to go to the director's report and we're going to call upon you again. Director of administration.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and, uh, and counsel. Just one item this evening and also for the folks at home as we are preparing for the city election, which will be on May second. Uh, it'll be, uh, the doors will open at seven P.M., or seven A.M., I'm sorry, and go to eight P.M.
Seven to eight.
Say, uh, seven A.M. And it's over at the Star Center, seven hundred Congress Avenue. It'll be on the gymnasium side and we look forward to having everybody there. There'll be a, uh, we have a, uh, good number of, uh, of candidates running and we also have a, uh, a question for the citizens on some surplus property. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Camatory. We're going, uh, good evening, Ms. Bridget Johnson, Director of Economic Development and Tourism.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and citizens at home. Um, I am certainly feeling the effects of Monday, so I apologize for anything that I may do in the next two minutes, but, uh, or say. Um, one, uh, EDAB, the Economic Development Advisory Board, meets this Wednesday, April nineteenth, four P.M. here in council chambers. As always, we invite the public to attend. So once again, EDAB meets this Wednesday, April nineteenth at four P.M. The Tourism Advisory Board meets this Wednesday, April nineteenth at ten A.M. here in council chambers as well, citizens. Um, the public is invited to attend all of our meetings. House Bill ten fifty-nine, um, I wanted to spend a few moments to talk about this bill that recently passed this year in the General Assembly. It is Hartford County Alcoholic Beverages Performing Arts Theater License. Um, this bill is good for Hartford County and good for Havity Grace. I don't know how many of our businesses or citizens was actually following this bill, but a short synopsis is, in this section, performing arts theater means an area, a building, or a structure designed and used for plays, acts, dramas, concerts, or histrionics by actors or actresses performing on a stage or the showing of movies or films. There is a Performing Arts Theater Beer and Wine License. The board may issue the license for use on the premises of a performing arts theater operated by a nonprofit organization. Key words being nonprofit organization and a stage. Um, we have one, um, facility or venue in the city of Havity Grace that this would definitely affect in a positive manner, um, and that would be, uh, the Arts Collective, uh, two twenty gallery. Um, so just to keep the citizens up to date, um, Adam, of course, within our office, um, really, um, worked diligently down in Annapolis this session. Um, this bill was amended several times before it was passed, but I think it's, it's good for us. The, uh, coming up is the annual citywide yard sale and sidewalk sale. It will take place this Saturday, April twenty-second, from eight A.M. to four P.M. Um, the list of participants will be posted Tuesday evening on the Explore Havity Grace website and Facebook page. Um, it's large this year. We have over one hundred addresses, um, participating and I think the highest that we've ever had was around sixty-five. First Fridays begins May fifth in downtown Havity Grace, so that's coming up. It's, as usual, live bands, cafes seating, restaurants, food trucks, music vendors, kid zones. Um, if anyone needs additional information, contact visitor center, four one zero nine three nine twenty-one hundred. And also, this week is National Volunteer Appreciation Week. Uh, we have, are showcasing our volunteers on Explore Havity Grace, Facebook, Instagram, and also the economic development page. We have some great volunteers in the city of Havity Grace and the two, um, that were highlighted today, Mitch and Ms. Mary. Well, one is eighty-nine and the other is eighty-six and that shows their dedication to the city of Havity Grace, their dedication to working in the visitor center. Um, they are two of our most loyal, um, volunteers, so we always want to show our appreciation and showcase them. So we'll have a little, a little shindig for them at the end of the week. Um, I think that's it, unless there are questions for me. What did, what Steve? It's Monday, I said it, did I?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Any questions for Bridget? All right, great job. Thank you very much. Thank you. See if George can do so well. How you doing, George? Director of Finance?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, citizens. All right, uh, the finance, uh, financial report for the three major funds, uh, goes as follows. The general fund has increased through, little over three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, actually a little over three twenty-seven, to a fund balance of four, just under four point four million dollars. It was estimated during this time period to go up just under three hundred and twenty-five thousand, so it, uh, increased three thousand dollars more than we thought it would at the time and the fund balance does sit at four point, just under four point four million dollars. And the fund balance does sit at four point, just under $4.4 million. To get there, revenues, uh, was, were, were $936,000, uh, since my last report, bringing the total to 21.2 million, a little above that. Uh, the budget expected about $922,000 in revenues. Uh, and so it exceeded the budget by just under $14,000. Uh, during that same two-week period, we spent a little over $600,000 to 16.8 million for the year. Um, we expected to spend just under $600,000 to, for, uh, to a balance of 23.7. So the expenditures were a little below what we expected, spent by about $10,000, um, bringing the total below, for the year, to 6.9 below where we thought we'd, uh, in spending where we'd be. As I said, the fund is ahead 1.6 because of the revenue was lower. Most of that, as you're, as I've reported several times, is the delays in ARPA-funded pro, projects and the like. Um, actually, as is the actual revenues we received this week were mostly ARPA and bond funding that we both applied for and, and received. Um, in Fund Nine, the fund balance is up two point, little over 2.7 million dollars to a positive 1.1, and it was at a deficit two weeks ago when I reported. Um, the estimate was that we would climb 3.2 million dollars, uh, to just a little over 1 million. So while, um, we are, the, the fund balance is below budget by about $50,000, and it is down for the week, uh, for just under $440,000. Revenues were 3.56 million to bring us to 14.5, little, almost 14.6 million dollars for the year. Again, most of those were bond funds that we applied for and, and ARPA, which we transferred over for the end of the third quarter and reported to the federal government. Um, the spending was just under $800,000, uh, to bring it to 13.4, little, 13,450 for the year. Um, we expected to spend about just, uh, basically $300,000 to 16 million, which means spending, um, was, uh, excuse me, spending was, um, above budget by almost half a million dollars. Uh, most of that is projects kicking off into gear and just now, uh, operating expenses for the fund. Uh, the Marina Fund, uh, the fund balance is sitting at just, uh, touch less than $940,000, and it increased just essentially $6,000 for the two-week period. Uh, the budget estimates were that we would take in, um, a little under 650, or that we would be at $650,000 for the fund balance at this time. So we, it, uh, it was to decline about 2.4 was our estimate for the Marina. Um, the, the, uh, total fund balance remains above our budget expectation by almost $300,000, and it improved versus the budget by a little over $8,000 for the two-week period. Revenues were $15,000 to bring us to just over 1.7 million dollars. Uh, we were budgeted to spend $18,000, uh, to basically 1.7, so it's pretty close. We're above budget by a whopping $13,000, and, um, we actually, uh, took in 3,000 less than we thought at the time. The spending at the, for the two-week period was just, uh, was just over $9,000 to bring us to just under 800,000 for the year. Uh, the budget expected about $20,000. Most of that will be due to timing to, but we are still, uh, below budget for the year spending by almost $280,000. Um, it was clearly intended to be a slow week in the Marina, and it was. And that's my report for this evening.
Thank you, George. Any questions for George? Thank you very much, Dr. D.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Melizer, Director of DPW.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council President, council members, citizens. Uh, first, I want to talk about in-house backhoe rodeo that we conducted, give you a few project updates, and then talk about how citizens can have their input on the state highway, um, for some of the, uh, surveys they put forward. Uh, first, the backhoe rodeo was a success. Many years ago, we used to compete against Aberdeen and Hartford County, um, against, uh, different backhoe operators to compete to see who was the most skillful. Uh, once Rick Hickman left, I wanted to have the potential for someone to understand, uh, who could take his position, so we had a competition. Um, we had eight sign up, whittled the list down to four, was highly competitive, but was pleasantly surprised at the talent of our team. Um, I'd like to thank the administration for supporting the competition, congratulate Kieran Dunn, he did outstanding, and it was a great morale boost for the team, so thank you for, for, um, having us host that. Thank you. Quick project updates. So we, um, had the competition during the day. Um, we had some teams conducting some sewer backups and sewer cleanings, and then, at the same time, we had that crew come in overnight to fix a valve leak and remove a hydrant on Revolution. Never easy on a state highway, shut it down at night. Um, so I want to give them credit for their outstanding work. Speaking of the state highway, wanted to give a quick shout-out for a really quick turnaround they had. We put a work ticket in, they had a broken sun down, less than a day, they came out and fixed it, so it was a record-setting pace. I just appreciate the quick time and response. Last, we had 15 native trees, uh, key word, native there, um, on South Washington and Congress, so hopefully no lantern fly infestation because they are native. Um, as part of our annual tree planting initiative, we do still have the Arbor Day coming up, uh, April 28th. We hope you join us, um, down at the new boat ramp. It's gonna be a good celebration. And we also have the citywide cleanup, um, April 22nd, so we'd love to have you down there. Hopefully, the cat team can join us to help clean the city. Looking forward to citizens coming out and showing their support. Lastly, I mentioned state highway in my report. I just wanna tell the citizens here and at home, um, there's a new long-range plan. It's called the 2050 Long Range Plan. It sounds very far from now, but, um, you can be involved and, um, have a direction on what, uh, some initiatives they have by visiting the city website. There's a survey and a link you can fill out and just give your input on some of the state roads coming through the city. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, EJ. Any questions for Mr. Melizer? All right, very, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lieutenant, how's the police department going?
Pretty good. Mr. Mayor, council, citizens at home. For what, last week? Last week, we, um, got our new barricades in. We got them loaded in the trailer. We'll be using them May's first Friday. If you would like to see how they operate, ask the officers, ask anybody from DPW. Um, we all took the training on it, and, uh, we'll be glad to explain it.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good to see you, Lieutenant. All right, we're gonna move to, uh, item 16, Business from the Mayor's Office. Couple comments. So, um... If you haven't been on our website lately, um, you should check it out when you, when you have some time. There's a lot of things you can do on a new and improved city website that you may not be aware of. And the only reason I bring this up is a lot of times I get, um, uh, random questions, all fair questions, but random questions when I'm out in public, and, uh, I always, uh, direct people to the city website for additional information. So again, if you haven't checked it out lately, um, it's been completely updated, brand-new. On the city website, you can find, you can find election information. Uh, you can find QR codes where to sign up for emergency notifications, job postings for the city of Haverty Grace. Um, you can, whether we're looking for trolley drivers, we're looking for summer help at the Marina, um, water plant operator, if you happen to be a water plant operator sitting at home and doing nothing right now. Uh, Main Street Tourism Coordinator, DPW drivers, laborers, uh, police recruits, or any lateral vacant, or, or laterals, we have vacancies in police department, um, dispatchers. So there's all kind of job postings on the website, city council meeting information can be found on there, uh, minutes going all the way back to the 1800s, commission meetings, YouTube videos of past council meetings going many, many years back, go back for planning commission meetings, Board of Appeal meetings. So, um, like I said, if you haven't been on our website lately, check it out. You'll have fun navigating, going down all the rabbit holes with different things we have posted on there. So just want to remind people, from time to time, it might, uh, you know, just check it out once or twice a year, you know? So, uh, we have a dumpster day coming up. Many citizens know what dumpster day means. Uh, down on Bloomsbury Avenue, uh, near Wilson Street, the city will have, on April 22nd, a bunch of big, huge roll-off dumpsters. What we do, we provide that service for our citizens. Um, you have to show, uh, identification that you do live in the city of Haverty Grace. But just, you know, the reason we do it, it's a spring cleaning for the city. We always say, if you want a clean city, you gotta give citizens opportunity to get rid of the bigger stuff. Um, you know, you got old, you know, junk under your deck, or you got stuff in your garage you've been thinking about getting rid of for the last 10 years, just put in your car, bring it down to the, um, to the dumpsters down on, uh, Bloomsbury Avenue near Wilson Street. Just make sure you have a driver's license that says you're Haverty Grace resident. Oh, it's up there. Sorry about, yeah, so. So anyway, um, just a heads-up, we don't take things that, uh, you know, we don't, we don't take tires or construction debris. We don't take TVs, but we also don't take mattresses. For some reason, people love to get, you know, I have, I've had the same mattress for 20 years. Like, I don't know why, I mean, I don't know, like, that's a thing, getting rid of mattresses. I mean, we had a dumpster day a couple of years ago, and there were so many mattresses. The thing is, you can't squish them down. So when you get like eight of them stacked up, you almost fill up a whole dumpster. I mean, so you have a $400 dumpster with like $20 worth of mattresses in it, and we can't squash them down like we can other junk. So we don't take mattresses. Uh, there's another way to get those disposed of. Um, but anyway, other than that, you can just go ahead and bring down, you know, just the junk around your house. And it's April 22nd, 8 o'clock to noon, Bloomsbury Avenue near Wilson Street here in Haverty Grace, and it's a, it's a service for all citizens of Haverty Grace. Another thing that I wanted to bring up, and again, a lot of times my comments are based on, like, the question of the week I've been getting. And so I've gotten several emails, uh, on this topic. So if anybody's been walking around Haverty Grace or driving around Haverty Grace, if you've been on Water Street lately... What's that? No. If you've been, if you've been on Water Street lately, uh, between the Amtrak Bridge and the Lockhouse, you'll notice that last week, we paved a really, really, really big parking lot, right there, and, uh, my son called it Lotzilla. It was so big, so we call it Lotzilla. But, so of course, I got some emails from, from good citizens I know very well that are very environmentally-minded citizens, and their question was, it was a fair question. You know, it's counterintuitive to see such a large, uh, impervious, uh, piece, you know, section of land right next to the river. And I got several emails, and I was very happy to respond, and that's the reason I'm bringing this up right now, in case there's anybody listening to this council meeting at home that might be thinking the same thing. There's a reason why we pave such a large asphalt, uh, area, surface area, so close to the water. Some people at home may know this, some people may be new to Haverty Grace, may not know this, but many, many decades ago, the, that area on Water Street was home to great big oil, oil containers, the kind that store oil, hundreds of thousands of gallons. Was it Gulf Oil? Yeah, Gulf Oil Company. And, so the ground's contaminated by virtue of spillage, leakage, whatever you want to call it, the ground is contaminated with oil. I know it doesn't really seem like it, and we've heard it for many years that the ground's contaminated, but boy, did we find out it was contaminated when the bulldozers kind of like took a couple of feet of grading. I don't know if anybody was around that area, it was about a month or so ago, it smelled like somebody like blew up a diesel tank. I mean, I was walking in a 7-Eleven, and you, it was, the smell of diesel was so strong. We're like, what is that? And everyone's pointing, they're actually scooping a couple of feet of that dirt off that lot, and you can smell the contamination. So it's really what, it's amazing what was still residual after decades. So the ground's been sitting there for years, and the idea, I mean, you can't, this couple foot of the surface, you can't tell it's contaminated, but you dig down low, it is, it's got oil in it. Well, Department of Natural Resources, in conjunction with Hartford County teamed up with us, um, their, DNR wanted that parking lot. Well, first of all, there's a boat ramp. There's a nice double-wide boat ramp that, that, uh, DNR had put in for us. It's very nice, and we needed a parking lot there anyway for the boat trailers, but the Department of Natural Resources wanted that land to be capped. Because the theory is, when it rains and the rain goes into the contaminated ground, over time, it pushes the oil into the river. And so the best thing you can do for that land is to cap it with that parking lot. So anyway, I'm just hoping maybe a few people hear this, uh, at home, and then you can be a disciple and go around telling other people what the mayor said. Um, because I'm, again, it's a fair question. Anybody that knows anything about the environment, you don't put that big of a impervious surface next to a river, but it's actually the best thing to put next to the river because it seals that contaminated soil off from future contamination, and it provides parking for, um, for boaters, which ideally will relieve, more boaters will now launch their boat at that boat ramp, and we will no longer have boats parking on the swell down at Tidings Park, which will get cars with leaking oil off of that ground. So, and the long story short, we're trying to do this environmentally as smart as we can. So just wanted to get everybody the, the background on that. And that parking lot hopefully will be open pretty soon. May 6th is Defender's Day. I don't know if people know this or not, but the first weekend of May every year, um, we designate, it's a, it's a city holiday. It's John O'Neill Weekend every year, the first weekend of May. And so we celebrate our city holiday with John O'Neill Day, or also, we also call it Defender's Day. It's May 6th down at Concord Point Park, and it starts at 1:00 and goes till 10:00 at night. There are food trucks, there'll be entertainment, there'll be frosty beverages of all sorts, and we'll cap the evening off to celebrate, uh, our Defender's Day weekend with a fireworks display shot off from the point by the lighthouse. So that is May 6th, from 1:00 to 10:00 down by the lighthouse. Uh, the entrance, or the admission fee is free to show up. This is a city-sponsored event. With that said, I want to wish my good friend and the Susquehanna Host Company Chief, Mr. Scotty Hurst, congratulations on his retirement from a career with the Prince George's County Fire Department. So he has plenty of time now to serve Haverty Grace, not that he wasn't serving it before with all his time, but, but, uh, he's a great chief. He's been, um, the chief for a long time, since probably 2009 maybe, around that time period, 2008, 2009. So he's still, we often joke with each other, you know, he'll stop being chief, and I'm stop mayor, I'll stop being mayor, and he'll stop being chief, so I don't know. We'll see what happens. Um, but I think he's a better chief than I am a mayor, so anyway. Last thing I want to say is, uh, is a recognition to a very special person here at the Savery Grace City Hall. A little earlier, Reverend Gene Proud kind of stole my thunder, but that's okay, he's a man of God, and that's all right. So, um, but I do want to recognize, um, I want to recognize a lady who's been, uh, working for the citizens of Haverty Grace for 17 years. Came here in 2006 and worked in the Finance Department, um, every citizen's favorite Department tax collections. But anyway, but did a really good job, and was very friendly with customers and, and helped a lot of, uh, people navigate their way through, uh, issues they had throughout the years. You were an amazing, amazing professional at your job. And back in 2019, my previous executive assistant, Mrs. Shyla Scott, uh, took a job on APG, leaving a vacancy for my job, and, and I asked Ms. Laird if she would come to the West Wing. We jokingly call it the West Wing because it actually faces the, anywhere my office is, the west of the building, but it's a jo, inside joke. Come to the West Wing and, uh, work with the mayor's office and as my executive assistant. But not only did she take the job, but she kept her old job too. So she actually was the tax, uh, the tax person for the city of Haverty Grace and also the mayor's and council's assistant. And you wore a lot of hats, uh, since 2019, and now Mrs. Laird's last day of the city is the end of the month, and she's going to retire. And like I said, I could not have ever asked for a better assistant. I know council feels the same way. And it made me think when Reverend Proud got up and said those kind words, that anyone who's ever had any interaction with you always walks away feeling good. And they always say you're a very kind person, very helpful, you always go above and beyond to help everybody, and, um, the city of Haverty Grace has been, can really blessed to have you here, and we're gonna miss you. Now, I was trying to convince you to do an even 20, but you wanted to leave it 17 years, so I don't know. But anyway, uh, you always have a place here if you ever want to come back, this, you know, but like I said, we wish you well in your retirement, and I'm only saying this because this is Reese's last council meeting, even though you'll be here about two more weeks. So thank you for everything you're saying. I'm sure a couple of council members will have a few things to say. Thank you. Well, how do you top that? So, let's go to council comments. Councilmember Center.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, citizens. First thing I want to do is thank our own Havering Grace Police Department for sponsoring the chamber luncheon last week, and also, the chamber for hosting seven of our candidates for city council. So, it was informative, I think, as everybody knows, our campaign period is very short, probably even less than a month, but signs are getting out there, and hopefully, everyone is getting to be known to some extent to the public. But the luncheon did host a forum, and they asked, they were, our candidates were asked a series of questions, a little bit different than the OPEC forum, which everybody gets the same question. This time, two people would get the same question, and then they'd move on to another question. So, for most people who were there, it was probably the first time they got to see these individuals together and answering questions posed by the, the chamber. So, I want to thank everyone, the candidates who was there, and took the time to attend and to answer some interesting questions, for sure. The other thing I want to remind everyone of is that if you have a driver's license, you have been registered to vote. So, I've heard that some people don't think they're eligible to vote in the city if they rent, that is not true. If you voted in the national election or the state election, you are eligible to vote in the city election. So, please, take this seriously, and let's improve our turnout. It's, for the number of people that we have, and the number, number of involvement that our citizens have as far as volunteering, and also, the effort that the city puts in to make this a more livable city every day, I hope you'll take the time to go out and vote. You have from seven AM to eight PM, so it should accommodate most schedules, if not every schedule. So, I would hope that you would do that. Next thing is, the Historic Preservation Commission has submitted four applications to the mayor to fill some vacant positions on the commission. You may remember that we recently approved two more positions, and we had two existing vacancies. So, those have been submitted to the mayor for his consideration. Next month is Preservation Month, so there'll be banners hung around the city to commemorate month-long events that the Historic Preservation Commission is planning. And the Arts Commission will be meeting on April twenty-fifth at six-thirty in City Hall, and they still need members of their commission to join them and help them with events that they have planned, such as the children's art show, Friday night, the Friday night concerts, et cetera. So, if you'd like to get involved a little bit with the arts, I'm sure they would be happy to have you. And again, I'm going to talk about, a little bit about Independence Day Commission, and hope that some of you are considering adding to our volunteer pool. So, that's all for me tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Center. Good evening, Councilmember Robertson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, city staff, ladies and gentlemen here and at home. Risa, gonna miss you, girl. I'm gonna say my goodbye for two weeks from now, but I'm gonna miss you. Couple of things, number one is, this Saturday is a pretty busy day around Havering Grace, as EJ mentioned, the River Sweep, I think that kicks off at eight-thirty at Tidings. And then, in the afternoon, there's the Lockhouses Beer and Wine Festival, that starts at twelve, and the Legion is hosting a spring fling that starts at seven. Ticket price includes food, you can get tickets at the door, that's gonna be a game time decision for myself. Budget Work Session, April twenty-fourth, that's next Monday, at six PM here in council chambers. The Havering Grace Youth Commission will be meeting next Thursday, April twenty-seventh at seven PM, that's back in the large conference room. And the Pyrex Festival, remember that that's coming up, mark your calendars for April twenty-ninth, from nine to four in our downtown area. So, you heard the mayor mention the city's website, and I just wanted to take a second, because a couple of us received some emails over the weekend, from one individual in particular, and it was revolving around the downtown revitalization efforts, and this individual was under the assumption that this is something that council and the administration just did by enclosed doors, but I assure you, it's not. If you go to the city's website, and in the search bar, type in the word Charette, that's C-H-A-R-R-E-T-T-E, I know, it's French, it drives me nuts, but Charette, C-H-R-R-E-T-T-E. It'll give you a whole, long litany of list, links for more than year-long process of public forums, public meetings, and it's not just council and the administration, but it's, it's the actual public themselves telling Tool Design what they wanted to see downtown. Tool Design coming back, putting that together, and then there are a couple of presentations that they had here at City Hall that you can view on here as well. So, to give you a more complete picture, so it's a very long and evolving process. Council has made no decision on the downtown revitalization, so I just wanted folks to be aware that that information does exist. Mr. Mayor, that's it.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson. We're gonna go to comments from Councilmember Shenegas.
Good evening, Mayor, council, administration, ladies and gentlemen in the audience and at home. Yes, indeed, this weekend is going to be a busy one, but come have some Earth Day Children's Fun at the Havering Grace Maritime Museum on the twenty-second, from eleven to two PM. You'll be able to see local author, Lindsay Pope, she will have a storytime and a sing, a signing of her new book, Stella's Dream. It'll be a nice, relaxing time, and you'll get a chance to see the Maritime Museum's open house following the storytime. Also, the following week, you'll have an opportunity to go out to the Steppingstone Farm Museum for their season opener from eleven to three PM. It, too, is loads of fun for the children and family alike, animals, history, many historic buildings, it's a beautiful time. I want to say thank you to the DPW crew for the parking lot progress at Water Street, and to the marina crew for helping manage the changes that are taking place during the fuel tank installation. It's quite an undertaking, but I see it's really, you know, going well, and I thank you so much, everybody that's involved. It was great also to see the new crosswalk painted at the Star Center, I felt awesome walking across it. Not only is it just a symbol of safety, but it was diagonal, so it made me feel like I was walking into this grand arena. So, it was very welcoming, and it was nice to see that appear overnight as we speak, since our last council meeting, when we mentioned that we want to see a little bit more safety in that area. So, thank you. Risa, you truly have been a blessing to all of us here. Not only are you just, you know, there helping us all out, you are truly a friend and a kindred spirit, and I thank you for, you know, being genuine, and you have left footprints on our hearts, and you will take them with us, with you, and we'll keep ours, and we will stay connected. Thank you. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Shenegas. Good evening, Councilmember Martin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council president, council administration staff, those in the audience, and those at home. Risa stole some of my thunder. I want to thank DPW as well for the quick action in the painting of the crosswalks at the Star Center, especially because of the ADA access ramp there. But to the Director of Administration, for his continued search for security and safety bollards with DPW Director Mizler, that we are going to be putting in there, again, to try to mitigate people being run over by cars, so it's, it's nice to see. We talk April twenty-second, it is busy. Havering Grace opening day of baseball, sorry to you if I stole some of your thunder there, but that is coming up. And for those who participated in the candidate forum, I want to thank everyone for coming out for that. And April twenty-sixth will be the OPEC candidate forum, and that will also be streamed online. So, if you want to know who the candidates are, you want to know where they stand, the questions will be asked by Dr. Jaffe and OPAC, who have done these for several years. It will be a nice streamed event, so please, take the time, learn who your candidates are, and come out and vote. Risa, finally, I am gonna miss you. It is so nice, and the shoes that you are leaving to be filled are going to be large, because you help keep all the council members on track. You sent us the reminders, don't forget. So, I don't want to forget to thank you for all you do.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, Councilmember Martin. Good evening, Councilmember Boyer.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, everybody, for sticking around. So, I want to start saying with the kudos for the trees, that Washington Street looks wonderful, I'm looking forward to it all growing in, we still have a couple of pockets, but to let everybody know that this is part of us, a planned approach to trying to make sure that we, we keep our beloved tree canopy alive by strategically planting trees, so that as the older ones come down, the newer ones are going to be able to replace them. So, it'll be a constant life cycle, because everything has a life cycle. I was talking with Joe, and his idea is to try, we're gonna try to finish off a little bit of Congress, and there's a couple of spaces maybe on Washington, but after that, hopefully, something on Washington, not Washington, Revolution Street, to try to get a little bit of a tree canopy going there. So, it's all exciting, two hundred trees in the past five years have been planted by the city, and that's amazing, that just shows our commitment to keeping everything that we love about our city keeping on going. The, the ramp, I gotta tell you, the kayakers are really excited, they're just busting, ready, being able to go out. There's a plan, the Pirates of the North are planning to go out on May nineteenth, and that'll be our first launch from the soft launch, and everybody's very excited about using it. I want to take this time also to thank Jimmy Baril, Nialla Garcia, Sergeant Dan Pets, Jeff Broschu, and our council president, Jimmy Ringstocker, for this weekend coming out and helping us film a PSA for the green team for Earth Day. It is to promote our composting program. We have reached over a hundred and six thousand pounds of household waste, has gone to composting, and it's so successful that we're adding another bin. And hopefully, we're going to be dedicating that bin to pizza boxes, because we found that that is taking up a lot of room in all of the other bins. So, hopefully, we'll have one to pizza boxes, but the big thing is, is that we need you all to rip it up, and you're gonna love the PSA, I'm not gonna steal any of the thunder for it, but Jimmy did a great job, and we'll be posting that on social media on Earth Day. So, look at it, and maybe post your own videos, and you'll see what I'm talking about. And finally, I, you know, I can't say, I'm gonna cry just saying it, so I'm not gonna say anything more, but, but thank you, you're just so wonderful, just thank you. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyer. Good evening, Council President Ringstocker.
Mr. Mayor, council, citizens, only a couple of things to say. Last week, we had the public hearing, Councilmember Robertson mentioned, we had the, did the general fund coming up next Monday, we have the Marina Fund and Water Sewer, so we'll knock all that out, hopefully, we won't have too many questions. So, we're gonna work on that. Opening day was already mentioned, went to the DU Ducks Unlimited banquet this weekend with, with Councilwoman Shenegas and her husband, and Mr. Mizler over here, we had a great time, and I drug former council president Dave Glenn out, and with his wife, we had a good time. I finally got my hen canvas back from Bobby Jobs, so I'm happy. I put that on my string, and let's see here, real quick, I want to point out, people that ride bicycles around town, like, I don't have any problem with bicycles, but I swear, okay, traffic laws apply to you, too, okay? Those stop signs, stoplights, I mean, you stop at those stop signs and stoplights, because I, like, the past week, I've almost hit three of them, just running right through the light, or coming down Chapel Road, and just blown right through the one right there at Tidings. So, you know, we, we don't want to hit you, we want you to be safe, but you, you've got to take some self-responsibility there, and realize traffic laws apply to you, so please, you know, follow the yields of the stop signs and, and pay attention. But, I want to end with, with something that's bothering me a lot. It's the state-of-the-athletics program over at Havering Grace High School right now. I've had issues in the past with, you know, just not helping with the rec program that feeds into the football program, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about when half of the track team has to stay home and can't travel to the track meets because they only have one bus, they don't have enough rooms, and when you do have kids on the bus, they're sitting three to a seat, which isn't safe. I think we can do better, and I think Harford County and Havering Grace Public Schools can do better for our kids. You know, the one the other day was in Perryville, you know, they could have run over to Perryville, dropped kids off, and come back and picked up more, but no effort was made. They usually leave, my son said they leave at like one o'clock anyways, and so it's not like I can get home from work or grab and, and take them, a lot of parents can't. And to have these kids miss out on, on their sporting events, something that they're putting their time and effort into, and showing up every single day, never missing a practice, staying to the end of practice, and then they don't get to go, because there's no planning for another bus to take the kids to a sporting program. And I don't know when this happened, because when I was in track and field, we had three buses. So, I'm just asking Harford County and Havering Grace Public Schools to do better. With that, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Oh, wait. You thought you were gonna get away with it. No, I love Risa because I always try to make her laugh, and sometimes I'll make faces during council meeting when the camera's not on me. So, but she's always wonderful, and, and it was mentioned here several times tonight that if I didn't have her, I don't know what I would do with my schedule. And I, I'm hoping we find somebody soon who's half as good as you, because Steve's gonna get a lot of phone calls about Jimmy missing events, and, you know, I'm gonna forget everything, and, 'cause I'm just, I'm busy and bouncing around, and I try to keep everything compartmentalized, and, and you're the one who's, you know, shoving the stuff into the compartments. And you mean so much to me, beyond that, as a friend, as just a, a person I can sit down and talk to when I come to council. You're, you're the reason why I come to council an hour early every council meeting, because I want to, first thing I do is I come back and I see you, because you cheer me up, you make me happy, you help me with the Boy Scouts, you still, we still have bags in there for the, the other Boy Scout troop. You know, if I need pens or little tchotchkes to hand out, you're always ready to jump up and grab them. I ask for a citation to be written from the city, or, or some sort of recognition, and you, you bang that right out for me to make sure it gets signed. And you make my life easier, I'm sorely gonna miss you, but I will be down to visit you. And I love you with all my heart.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council President. Item eighteen, adjournment, council have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Shenegas. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, or council meeting is now adjourned by a vote of six-zero and affirmative, the time is on nine oh three. Thank you very much, everybody, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.